Looks like it is, I can never tell if this is working right. Can you hear this? Okay. It looks like it's six o'clock, Wednesday, September 3rd. Everybody is here with the exception of Brian Reyes, Councilmember five, Place five. He is feeling sick, so we wish him well. We can start with number two, Pledge of Allegiance. He's up here. You can't, um, okay, that's what I suspected. They can't, okay. Can you hear me now? Not very well? Yes? Yes, here's Dan Jones, our city attorney. You're welcome to say, we've all met him up here, some of us for the first time. Yeah, y'all wave at me if you can't hear me and I'll either get closer to the mic or raise my voice, closer to the mic. Okay, I'll do that. All right, next up, we've got item number three, Citizen Comment Period. I'm going to read the rules for this. The citizen, the city council welcomes citizen participation and comments at all city council meetings. If you speak, you must follow these guidelines. A, respect and courtesy, direct your comments to the entire city council, not to an individual or to the audience. Show the city council the same respect that you would like to be shown in your speaking at the time allotted. So we have a first citizen comment period and then a second citizen comment period. I wanted to remind everybody that we are not allowed to respond to citizen comment period. There is a Texas law, Texas Open Meeting Act, that prevents us from talking about anything that is not on the agenda during that citizen comment period, so. But Ryan, our city manager, is going to be following up with citizen comments, so we do have some resolution on some of these things. Okay, first up, I've got Rose Gale Leatherberry.
We tell our children to put down their phones and pull out a book. But if we, as adults, don't follow the rule, why would we ever expect our children to do so? College English majors are struggling to read Dickens. If we let this slide, in a decade, that we will be lucky if graduate students can read and understand Dickens' "Fun with Dick and Jane." This brings me to our own library. We are very lucky to have two wonderful ladies, Linda and Wendy, that tend to our library, not only for books, but for many activities throughout the year. Last year, 1,500 preschool student, children and 1,600 school-aged children participated in the activities. Adult weekly activities include adult coloring, silver gamers, Cards for Troops, regular card making, and share yoga. There is also adult monthly lunch-to-learn activities. Special events, once a year, Easter Bunny Storytime, Easter Egg Hunt, specialties, parties, Donuts with Dead, PJ Stories, Times with Stuffed Animals Sleepover, summer reading program, trunk or treat, Veterans Day celebrations, which always has a speaker in patriotic songs by the elementary school children, letters to Santa, which are answered personally, and Santa Storytime with a visit from Santa, and a volunteer's luncheon. These are just a few of the many activities that Linda and Wendy create. For all of the activities, and all of the activities are in the library, which brings me to the reason that I am speaking to the city council. The library has completely outgrown the facility. There is room for expansion, the library, but the city council must make it a priority or it won't get done. The Friends of the Library Group does everything that we can to help monetarily with activities, but we cannot raise the money to expand, to expand the facility. That is something that must be done by the city of Garden Ridge. The city of Garden Ridge is very lucky to have such a fantastic library that is filled with preschoolers, school-aged children, and adults. But unless the facility is, but unless the facility is not only safe and larger, but also one that can become a community gathering place, people will stop coming. Mark Twain was correct when he said, "The man who does not read has no advantage over the man who cannot read." The city needs to join this battle for large facilities and get both young and old to read and encourage in activities because if book reading has no future, neither do librarians or libraries. Thank you.
Thank you, Rose Gale. Next up, we have Linda Potts.
So we don't need to, we don't need to say her name or anything anymore?
Uh, we still need to send your address, yeah.
My name is Linda Potts. I live at 8142 Ridge North Drive. I just want to give a big shout out to the Public Works Department this past week for fixing the pathway at Park Lane, Park Lane, Park Lane in record time. The water department had a mishap that caused a crater in the decayed granite pathway at Park Lane Park a week ago Monday. Public Works got the pathway fixed this last Friday with debris taken away, new decayed granite spread on the pathway, and it looks even better than before. Next two items I have is Park Lane also. These last two weeks, Dean Word has been repaving the city's portion of Bat Cave. The lead truck turned around in the Park Lane parking lot a zillion times. The parking lot that consisted of road base is now powder. I know that the paving crew just finished, but I asked that Public Works replenish the Park Lane parking lot with a truckload of road base and spread it out for me. There is nothing left but dust. Also regarding Park Lane, I asked for money to be put into the upcoming budget to get the trees trimmed. If Public Works has to get bids for this job, I ask that they start on it now. I would like to hope to get them trimmed up in October. There's a lot of dead hanging limbs and also the suckers that come out on the oak trees that I can't reach to trim. If they could get the sages trimmed up also, that would be great. Lastly, what I want to talk about is allowing golf carts in Garden Ridge. I know that I'm outside the city limits, but I do drive through the city. If you do not, if you do vote to have the golf carts, I would hope that you would vote for the stipulation that they stay in the neighborhoods and off of Bat Cave and Sheenthal. The traffic on Bat Cave has quadrupled in the last three years. I know because I helped the Lions by picking up trash on Bat Cave and recently added Sheenthal. It's like a racetrack with delivery trucks, construction trucks, people trying to get their kids to school and going to work. Never is there a time that cars are not coming from one direction or the other. It's bad enough that bicycles are allowed on Bat Cave because people try to pass them and not always at the safest places. Garden Ridge is not a sun city or the villages where people are retired and have all the time in the world. These drivers are on a mission, and allowing golf carts in Garden Ridge is only opening up a can of worms. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Next up, I have Timothy Casum?
Casum.
Casum, come up, state your name and your address, please.
My name is Timothy Casner. I'm at 21619 Forest Water Circle here in Garden Ridge. And I'm here to speak in opposition of golf carts. Have quite, quite a bit of experience with golf carts over the years. I've hunted home in Port Aransas for about 30 years. In 2010, they allowed them on the city streets down there. And since then, actually this summer, there's been three deaths. And also, not too far down the road, in Ubronville's, there was, what, nine people involved in an accident with golf carts? Golf carts, they lack airbags, seat belts, reinforced frames, making them highly dangerous in collisions and fatalities. Fifty-two-year-old man runs off the road in a golf cart and kills himself. He's 52 years old. The high risk of ejection passengers, you know, people driving around with their babies in their, their arms, and you see this all the time, and it's just, it's hazardous. It's very hazardous. Speed limit, there's quite a discrepancy between a golf cart, which has the slow-moving-vehicle emblem, I think, which is only supposed to be 15 miles an hour, at least it was back in farm days, and none of our roads are, you know, 15 miles an hour. Low visibility, you can't hardly see them because they're smaller and they're less likely to be seen by drivers, underaged and unlicensed drivers. Everybody wants to get their kid, you know, head start to driving. What's a perfect opportunity? A golf cart driving to, you know, just down the street. But, you know, that creates problems also. Inconsistent compliance, some of them don't have lights, reflectors, mirrors. Crashes and liability can result in lawsuits to both the owners and the city. And the police are burdened with the reinforcements of these laws, or these people actually on the road. Noise and disruptions, not very uncommon to see them coming down the road at three o'clock in the morning with some very nasty rap music on that you can't have any control over. Pedestrians, congestion with pedestrians, we have quite a few people that walk around during the mornings and stuff. But as far as I'm concerned, what's the purpose? You know, this is not a community where we have, you know, entertainment area, restaurants, and shopping. There's no real reason for them to be on the streets that I can see. So that's my ideas. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Next up, we have Andre, Miracle. Welcome. State your name and your address, please.
Yes. I'm Andre Miracle, 21520 Forest Water Circle, and I am here to oppose the golf carts in Garden Ridge. And I concur with everything that Tim just stated. I, in fact, I had pretty much everything he had on his list. And really, the big issue for me is what is the purpose? I think people will get in the carts and it'll be a joyride, and there are not many golf carts that I, that I would consider safe. And according to the Consumer Protection Safety Commission, it's about 15,000 accidents per year that are reported by people going to the ER. So how many accidents are not reported because they're, they haven't gone to the ER? And of those, 6,500 involve children, even though we say that they're not supposed to drive the golf carts. You know, the parents do not have 100% control over their children, and they will take advantage of that situation. And of 6,500 also include a number of fatalities. Tim also just brought forth several that were recently in the news. And 31% of those 15,000 were caused by teenagers and children taking advantage of the golf carts. I personally am a walker, and I cannot see that our roads are wide enough to accommodate walkers, cars, and the golf carts. And I believe that the police have enough on their plate. They do not need to be monitoring who is following the rules with the golf carts. And I feel like they should be spending their time on city code violators versus golf cart drivers. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Cindy Segovia. Just state your name and address.
Sure. Hi. Cindy Segovia, 8435 Twisted Oaks here in Garden Ridge. Thank you very much. I don't have a prepared thing. I just heard today about the golf carts. I thought that maybe wasn't going to be, you know, even discussed or voted on. I can't believe it is. I'm certainly opposed to it. I think they said just about everything that needs to be said. I do have a home in another community that allows for golf carts. Don't like it there either because soon as the summer came, I saw teenagers out driving, and then plus, I can't imagine how you're not going to pass a golf cart on Bat Cave Road because it's a no-passing zone. If I'm stuck behind one, I'm going to be pretty annoyed. But there's a lot of people that are going to be more than annoyed and just blow right past them. So I don't think it's very safe or wise. They want it in the woods, great. They want it in George Branch, those are gated communities, fine. But I don't even think they should be in neighborhoods. They have no place. I've already seen the problems. So thank you very much. Oh, and one more thing. Linda Potts was just up here. She does a lot of work for Garden Ridge. She's not even a citizen here. And I hope y'all show her the appreciation and do things for her. I do a lot of volunteer work in San Antonio. They treat me like a queen. Hope you do the same thing here. I'm not a citizen of San Antonio, but I have all kinds of benefits from it. So, anyway, just my two cents.
Thank you, Cindy. Sharon Stripling? Name and address. I think you know the routine.
I know the routine really well, don't I? Sharon Stripling, 21729 Forest Water Circle. Like Linda, I want to give a shout out to Public Works because we've had a drainage issue over by the Upper Pond in Forest Waters by the club, and they came out, what, last week or the week before, and did a fabulous job of putting bigger drainage pipes in. So I'm hoping that'll take care of the little drainage area filling up there. My next comment is on golf carts. And I don't really have any skin in this game on the golf carts, one way or the other. My issue is more safety, more than anything. According to the police, well, the police chief has stated they only could go down Bat Cave and Sheenthal. Sheenthal Road on the backside of Forest Waters has some terrible blind spots. You can't even get out off of Waterwood onto Sheenthal without pulling all the way out into the intersection. I think that would be a nightmare for a golf cart, and there are 18-wheelers, dump trucks, everything coming down that road. Bat Cave, ever since they've repaved it, like I said last meeting, we've got a lot of drop-offs. Some of the neighbors in Forest Waters have even called the county to come out because a lot of the gravel has washed into their yards. Their whole yard got piled up. It's piled up along the fence on the backside of Forest Waters. So I don't know how you would pass or, I just don't think it's a good thing to do there. But the other main thing is, I came in off of Bat Cave the other day, going to my house off of Benzile, and I turned the corner and coming off of Woodland Cove, one of our cul-de-sacs, here comes an e-bike and an electric scooter. And not once did those kids even stop at the stop sign. If I would have not been paying attention, they would, I would have totally, totally wiped them out. And, and that's happening all over the place. We've had a lot of people posting on our Forest Waters webpage about how they've almost hit those. So I really hope that the police chief and the police department can try to maybe watch it because it seems like there's a lot of it going around Forest Waters, going towards the club or to the lake. And I even had a golf cart today go by my house between eight and nine o'clock, and I don't know where it was going, but it went zooming by. So, and I haven't seen them in quite a while, so that was the first one in broad daylight. So I was sort of shocked. But anyways, thank you. Is anybody else talking? Anybody else talking?
Nope, you're it. Thank you. All right, on to the consent agenda. I'm assuming you've all had time to look at the consent, or the items on the consent agenda. Anybody need to pull an item from the consent agenda? Nobody? Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda as written.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? No opposed, motion carries. We are on to number five, Staff Reports. Five A, City Manager Monthly Activity Report.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, let's see if there's, can you hear me? Sounds kind of low. We have two employee anniversaries. First is Jill Wallison for seven years, and then Sergeant Keith Osborne, nine years. So thank you for, oh, sorry. There's Jill. And then as far as volunteer hours, we had nine hours, and that's our bill stuffers. And I spent some time with them this week, so they had a few questions, and most importantly, they wanted me to get out the word to try to get people signed up for bills online to reduce the amount of, you know, bills you're stuffing to be mailed. So I was asked to do that. And then, of course, in the packet, you have community center and building permits. So if you have any questions specifically, please let me know, so.
Okay, any questions for Ryan?
Oh, we did have, sorry, thanks, Cindy. We did have, thank you, thank you for all you do. Sorry, I'll read it from that point. "For our community each and every day, thank you so much for protecting our home while we are on vacation in July. God bless y'all. Robert ends."
Looks like Blue.
Leah Simmons.
Blue Simmons, yes.
So that was a note to the police department. And then, "Thank you, Jill, for so much time and hospitality. I receive my solicitor's permit. I'm wearing it as a badge of honor, knowing I did the right way. Always grateful for you. Dr. Jorge Ayala."
All right.
Some thank you notes.
Awesome, thank you. So no questions for Ryan? Then we will move on to five B, Finance, HR, Monthly Activity Report. That's with Robin.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just have a couple of HR. We have two patrol officer positions available at the moment, and then on October 1st, we will have three with the addition of our new patrol officer that we're adding in the budget. We'll have a part-time code enforcement officer position that we'll be looking to fill on October 1st. And then we do have a court administrator that is starting next week on the 8th. So we are getting staffed up and adding on spaces for October. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Any questions for Robin? No? Then we move on to City Secretary, five C.
Thank you. I just wanted to briefly talk about ordinance codification and just give an update on where we are. First, I want to just go over the, a lot of people probably don't know what that means when we talk about it, so just briefly, I just put in my report that we're in the process of codifying our ordinances. That basically means that we're collecting, organizing, compiling all of the city ordinances into a structured, searchable, and easily accessible resource that encompasses every rule, regulation, law governing the city, so you don't have to go find the ordinance number you're looking for and click on that PDF document on our website and search through to find the regulation. What we have on the screen is an example from another city that used general code, which is who we are using. And so when we are done with this process, our ordinances will look something like this, where you can just see the overall provisions in the chapters on the left side, where it's like administration and personnel, animal control, building regulations. So much easier to find the, what you're looking for when it comes to city ordinances. We expect that general code is finalizing and updated organizational analysis to be reviewed by city staff. I should be receiving that any day is the plan. And they also have attorneys and legal editors that will be reviewing and analyzing our ordinances for conflicts, duplications, inconsistencies, and compliance with statutory requirements. And they'll provide those suggestions and options to improve our code. Once we go through that collaborative process with them, we will ultimately produce a draft for city council's review. I'm not sure of the exact timeframe, but I do know that the bulk of the work has been done already in compiling all of the ordinances and getting them to them, and them reviewing and sifting through just to get us a organizational analysis. So I do think we're on the home stretch here. So hopefully soon, within a few months, I would hope, we would have something that looks like this. That is all that I have to report this month.
Thank you. That's a huge job, and it will be a real benefit to people. It's a lot easier to, to search these ordinances than it is to hunt and peck and find something on our website and then read the whole ordinance to find the exact information that you're looking for. So it will be great. Any questions from council? Okay, move on to five D, the Police Department. What do you have, chief?
Are we on? There we go. Okay. Thank you. So most everything is in my report already. I did want to highlight some of our upcoming outreach efforts that we have going on. Tomorrow, we have pizza with the police right here in this room. I just found out earlier today that apparently it's the kickoff of NFL and the Cowboys are playing or something, so I don't know, we might, we might have a tough time with that one, but we're going to be here tomorrow evening having pizza. Also, National Night Out coming up October 7th. It's only a month away. I believe you all know that last year, we put it back out into the communities instead of having just a gathered function. So now we're, we're getting the communities to do their block parties. The officers go out and visit with the, the folks, and everybody meets their neighbors. We've got that going again. We're trying to get more parties registered, more neighborhoods registered. We're going to be getting some signs up pretty soon at some of the entrances to the gated communities and on some of the areas to remind everybody, but we need to get them signed up, get these things going, so people get out and meet their neighbors on, on National Night Out in October. Also, in October, on the 18th, in the past, the, the Garden Ridge Citizen Police Academy alumni has done a car show every year. That got changed this year. They're doing Casino Night. That is on October 18th. We've got it up at the community center. We only have, I believe, two tables left for sponsorship, so if anybody wants to get in on that... So if anybody wants to get in on that, they need to contact, contact us up at the police department, because we've only got a few slots left up there to get anybody in. It's going to be a good time. So I just wanted to bring that stuff up since it's on short, short notice. We also still have our two newest officers going through FTO. They're getting close to the end, and we still have one at the academy. She graduates the end of October. So everything's moving and progressing forward with that.
Thanks, chief. How many neighborhoods do you have signed up for National Night Out?
Actually, I don't know.
You don't know?
Jill's running, running the registration.
Kelly's in charge of Wildwind this year. I'm out of town.
I believe there's one on Brandywine, next, next block over from you over there, I think.
Yes, good. Awesome.
We need more. We need a whole bunch. We need a whole bunch of them.
Yeah, we need a whole bunch. It's really fun. No questions for chief? Let's move on to public works. Steven?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. For the public works report, most everything's in the report listed. Like to highlight about the resurfacing and repair of Bat Cave Road. Just got it striping today, so we're going to walk, do a walkthrough here soon to look for any discrepancies in it with the engineer. I'd also like to remind everybody that the dumpsters are back in September, and we have four dogs ready for adoption. So it pretty much concludes my public works report.
Thank you. Any questions for Steven? No? That's a cute dog up there. That's a cute dog. I did have one question that skipped my mind for a second, so I'll skip that. Okay, let's move on to F, library monthly activity report. Steven, you're watering water as well, sorry.
Sorry. We pumped 50 acre feet out of the Edwards. Edwards is still in stage four restrictions. We are in stage three. Trinity, we pumped 43.64 acre feet, and our water loss was 3.8% with no reported leaks in the city.
Thank you. Any questions about water? We're good? Okay, now Linda, the librarian.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, we had 121 volunteer hours during August. I wrote a little more in my report this time to kind of flesh out those bare bones numbers. So maybe it gave you a more, a bigger picture of what we do. We were very pleased with our summer activities, but they came to a screeching halt at the end of July. And so August, it felt like, oh, we're not doing anything for a couple of weeks. And then we decided to get busy, and we started our new projects, our new programs. The two big ones are Chair Yoga and Silver Gamers. I did include a picture, which you, you saw. The first one, well, okay, the second one. Silver Gamers, we're right smack in the middle of the open space of the library there. If somebody needed a book that from like Abbott to Baldacci, they couldn't get to it, and they couldn't get to the computers either, but we had a good time in the middle there. Then the next one was the Chair Yoga. We started out in the library, and it's like, where's Wendy? She's the leader. She's about 30 feet down. The people on the right, you can see the red tile on the floor. That means they were almost out the door. They couldn't hear what she said. So then we moved, we were able to move into this room. We look very, it's very spacious, but we have a wonderful sound system here, and it's working out very, very well. At least we have until September. And then in October, well, we'll be wandering around just a little bit. We'll be in the community center part of, most of the time. Anyway, as you can see, a lot, we, a little more space would be very, 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 very nice. We would enjoy it. At the bottom of my report, I wrote, "Community is not just about being together, it's about doing life together." And the author is unknown.
Thank you. Any questions for Linda? No, I've heard great things about the Chair Yoga. Very popular.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing that. So we are on to city, item six, city engineer project status reports. Hank?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Most of my items are included in the report. I did want to touch on the municipal ground storage tank rehabilitation project. We should have a recommended contract for your consideration next month, so the bidding phase is going as planned, and should have something for you soon. And as Steven mentioned, on the Bat Cave Road improvements project, they are substantially complete. They have to put some, some raised markers down tomorrow, but they're basically there. So we're going to be taking a look at that at the end of this week, and they should be back out to do some incidentals, but they're more or less complete with that project. A lot going on, so if you have any other questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions for Hank? We do have a lot of projects on, in the works. Everybody good?
Thank you, Hank.
Thank you.
Next, we are on to item seven, city commission reports, recommendations, possible actions. A is planning and zoning commission. They did not meet in August. And B is water commission. Bill Pol. Thank you, Chairman Pol.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, these are the key points from our August 19th meeting. The commission recommends to the city council, and I believe it's on your agenda, reappointing the current commissioners, Dr. Richard Carmichael and Mr. Kevin Harshberger, to two addition, two additional two-year terms. I'd further like to recognize both these gentlemen for their service, in particular to Mr. Harshberger, who is now entering his 10th year of service on the water commission. So that's really fantastic. The second item, we're continuing our review of both ordinances, 61 drought management and 159 landscape and irrigation. There's been a review with the city attorney, and we incorporated those changes in our last meeting. There's a public hearing scheduled on, on the ordinance revisions for the September 16th Water Commission meeting. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. We need to jump back up to 1.1, which was, we just received the recommendation to reappoint Commissioner Dr. Carmichael and Commissioner Harshberger to serve another term with terms expiring September 30th, 2027. We need to discuss and take action. Council, any discussion?
I'd just say both of them, I think both of them are highly qualified there, and glad that Commissioner Harshberger is still willing to serve. It's been a while, so he's a good asset.
Awesome. We certainly appreciate their service. Can I get a motion?
Can I make a motion to reappoint Commissioner Dr. Carmichael and Commissioner Harshberger to serve another term with terms expiring September 30th, 2027?
Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed? The ayes have it. And we did get your monthly update already, so thank you. On to eight, approvals and authorization. The following items are for discussion, consideration, and action. Eight A is request from Buckley Powder Company for a partial exemption permit to conduct blasting activities at Heidelberg Materials Surf Tex Quarry for the period of October 1st, 2025 through September 30th, 2026, and set annual permit fee. So Ryan, you want to plow ahead with that one, please?
Mayor and Council, this is an annual fee that the city council approves. In front of you, you have a breakdown of, of the fee that is going to be applicable for this permit, which break down the costs related to have the set fee, which I believe is about $33,000. There's no change from last year, but Robin did a great job of breaking that down to show exactly what costs are for setting that permit. And then we have a representative from Buckley here to give a presentation. He provided a presentation at the advisory council, and as we've discussed, would be a good idea to have him do a presentation here for council, because he's never done the presentation here for city council. And that way, if anybody calls to ask or inquire about blasting operations, we can always refer them to this council meeting, so they can see the same presentation.
Thank you so much for being here. I hope we all learned a little bit more about blasting.
Okay, thank you for having me, Mayor and Council. My name is Dustin Althoff with Buckley Powder. Sales, I'm a sales and technical manager for the region, southern region of Texas. I've been with Buckley for about eight years, about the same amount of time that we've been servicing the Surf Tex Quarry for Heidelberg. So I will go ahead and get started on this. So just a little bit of history about our company. We've been in business for about 105 years. We blast approximately, it's north of 50 million tons in the San Antonio and New Braunfels area. All of our blasters are required to attend a minimum of 40 hours of classroom training. This is on top of, you know, countless hours of, hours in the field, learning the craft, learning the science behind everything, training behind seasoned blasters. So we're not just throwing our guys out to the wolves and just saying, here you go, good luck. We want to provide the best service we possibly can, both to our customer and be good environmental stewards. The, I'll get into it a little bit more in the presentation. I don't want to take too much time. But each, each shot that we, that is designed and blasted, we are using the latest and greatest in GPS technology. That has been something that we've, we've grown and improved on in the past, past few years. We only use electronic detonators. It's just more accurate. It's a safer cap to use that, that is used to initiate the blast. The other option would be a non-electric, which there's quite a bit of scatter, so you don't know, there's some holes that aren't going off exactly when you want to. So this is helping control vibration and overall performance for the shots for, for our customers. Again, each, each shot is studied, you know, based on the readings of vibration and air over pressure. That's typically where, you know, we get a lot of our, our issues with, with neighbors, them calling in and letting us know how the shot felt, you know, what, how they felt in the house, outside of their house, whatever it may be. And then we can take that and make adjustments to our blast to, to make sure that we, again, are providing, that we're being good environmental stewards, as well as providing proper service for our customers. And then just, just a breakdown of the chart there, just in the region, we have well over 200 years of technical expertise at our disposal that we can, you know, if we have any, any true issues, any questions, you know, not one person will, will make a decision on their own. We can get several different employees and, and technical experts to come and help us with designs of shots. I believe this is in the packet that you may, you may have, that we have submitted. It's just a breakdown of kind of what we're, what we're looking at from a design standpoint. And just kind of the basics that you'll look at is just spacing, burden, hole depth. Timing is on the next slide. Stemming, every bit of that will depend on how well a shot turns out and, and how well it's designed. You have to have, those are the, those are the true basics. I will say, for Heidelberg, they have, they have invested quite a bit of, of money and equipment with the GPS to make sure that the, the floor, floor grades are where they're supposed to be. And that needs to be the case for how we design a shot. If it's too high and we're drilling and loading holes, there, it adds an extra confinement. So what that means, and I'll, I'll get into it a little bit later, what that extra confinement means is that energy from the blast has to travel somewhere. So if it's not going out towards the wall to, to break it like it should, it's going to go back behind the shot, and that's what's going to cause potentially higher vibration and where people are going to feel that a lot more than what they, what they normally would. So they've spent quite a bit of money outfitting their equipment, but that, with the GPS, to make sure that they're, they're following what we're trying to, to provide to them. And this is just a quick example of how a shot is timed. All of these numbers, we deal in milliseconds, so 1,000 milliseconds is, is one second. So you can see how quickly everything's moving. Typically, shots are going to last under a second. There are times it'll go more than that. But at this particular location, they tend to stay in the 900 millisecond or right at, right at 1,000 milliseconds. And this is what I was talking about a little bit between the electron, or non-electronic, or, sorry, excuse me, non-electric and electronic detonation. You can just, you can control it a lot better. I wish, I have a good video. I just don't have it on here. Would be happy to share that with anybody. You can see just the, the precision of electronic versus non-L. And Ryan, I can, I'm happy to share that with you if I can, if I can find it. Before every shot, we use drone technology and GPS to fly the face of the shot. So basically, the green and the blue that you see up there represents there's enough burden for the amount of explosives in the holes closest to it. If you don't have enough burden, that tends to send the energy out quicker than anticipated, and the rock goes further than what we would want it to. And then again, if we, if we have too much burden, that's going to cause an issue potentially back behind the shot and what people are going to feel. So we do this for every single shot. Before we lay the shot out, we, we are able to place the holes exactly where we want them to with GPS, and then we fly it again for measure, just to make sure they were drilled where they were supposed to. Again, a little bit of what I was referring to earlier with, with the, the ground vibration going, you know, back to the house, back behind the shot. Again, each shot is designed to optimize the fragmentation of the material of the limestone to, as, as well as have the least impact on the surrounding neighbors. So both of those aspects, you can do both, and that's what we strive to do. So we actually, we do have instances that if the cloud cover is too low, when you, when you shoot that shot, it's going to, it's going to act as a, as a barrier, and it's going to keep the sound down, and you're, you're going to feel it, or you'll, you'll feel it a lot more because you have that cloud coverage. If it's going to be a low ceiling, we'll cancel shots just to keep, keep from having any potential issues that we, that we don't want. And then, you know, it's wind direction, it's rain, anything that we feel is going to be a negative impact on that shot. Heidelberg works very closely with us. They'll cancel a shot or move it to another day that's, that's a little better conditions. I'll go ahead and touch base to this particular area. There's Del Rio clay that is, causes some readings to be maybe not what we expect. Typically, you know, your vibration will decrease the further you go, the amplitude, and then the frequency will also drop off. There are times that we'll have a reading, a good reading of a seismograph that's closer, that has lower amplitude and frequency than one that's a little bit further away, and it has a lot to do with that clay, the clay scene that, that's below, below this area, which that's not, not supposed to happen. But we do have, keep up with good history. We have an idea of, you know, what we need to do and how we need to design everything for those, to make sure that we, we minimize vibration in those areas. Air over pressure, just a few examples here. The USBM curve, the Bureau of Mines, the limit is 133 decibel. the limit is 133 decibels. At Servtex, we strive to stay below 120. That's just what they've asked us to do. Again, it's perception, trying to keep, keep the perception of a blast down. Just for everybody to know, a clap of thunder 1,000 feet away would be 138 decibels. So that even that's higher than what the US BM standard is. And then a single pane glass breakage, they're 160, would take 160 decibels. So just, just give you a scale, a little bit of, of what we're trying to do versus kind of just real world and what, where everything is. Amplitude. Amplitude and frequency are functions of one another. So the closer it is, the higher the amplitude and the frequency. And typically, it's on the next slide. I'll probably just talk to both of them right now. But the higher the frequency typically, the, the better, the better the result. You don't feel it as much. You don't feel the blast as much. Now, one person's perception is, is different than the others. I may not feel something at, you know, a .05 inches per second where Ryan may feel something at .01. Just the way it is. Everybody's perception's a little bit different. And like I said, amplitude, the energy dissipates with distance. So closer it is, higher. Further you get away, should decrease with the exception of the Del Rio clay that I just, just discussed. Amplitude typically can be dictated by the timing of the production blast. So we can adjust timing. You know, not, no, not one shot is, is like the, the last. So you're going to continually make adjustments and basically learn from, from your prior blast. We try, if at all possible, to keep our frequencies above 10 hertz. Again, that's, it's a perception. So the higher the frequency, the less you're going to feel the amplitude going through your home. And like I said, discussed earlier, the frequency, it, it dissipates with the, with the distance as well. And I had, I had some shot videos. I was going to, I was going to play. I don't, I don't know if they'll play or not. Just any of them. They're all basically, okay, not a big deal. They're pretty uneventful. I think that's the, that's our goal is if anybody goes out to, to see a shot, and I think Heidelberg is, is more than willing to have you guys out. I think I can speak to them on that. I think it's on my, it's just on my flash drive. I don't know if you want it. So these are the blasts that are, are closest to the city of Garden Ridge inside the Heidelberg Servtex quarry. Like I said, it's, we're, I'm excited when, if somebody's out there that's never seen a shot before, if they just say, "Wow, that's, that's it," that means the shot went extremely well. So you don't want any rock getting up, no vertical displacement. You don't want rocks spitting out of the face. You just want it to kind of hump up and, and lay out. So that's kind of, that's an example. These are some examples of what we, what we look for and, and pretty typical of any shot that we have at the, have at the quarry. So I think that is all I have. If you want to gather any questions, then I can get back to, to anybody.
Mayor and Council, you have any questions? Like I said, speaking to Dustin, I thought it was a good opportunity to provide you this presentation. So we could have it on the record as well. I think in years past, he was not asked to do this presentation, but I think it's pretty educational and informative, especially if residents either here or watching can see the actual blasting operations and the science behind it.
Yes, thank you. Any questions?
I had a couple of questions. It looks like there's no vertical throw on that at all. Is, it's hard to tell from the camera angle though. What, what is it typically?
It, no, it's typically what you see there is, is what we, we have. We try to keep the right amount of stemming to keep the energy in the ground.
So is that, was that no vertical throw? I couldn't really tell from the angle.
I'm sorry. It's just, it's, maybe I don't understand your question.
How high does the debris go?
Oh, how high does it drown?
Yeah. No, no, the debris from the blasting, how high does that go?
Throw another, you want to play another video? I'd say it stays 10 to 15 feet.
Okay.
It won't go above.
Yeah, pretty much nothing.
I mean, it's very minimal.
Yeah, and you mentioned ceiling. How low, how low the ceiling does it have to be before you cancel?
Typically below, some, somewhere, somewhere between 500 feet to 1,000, we're really looking at trying to, to move the shot or at least we'll maybe load it and then shoot it later in the day if the ceiling looks like it's going to raise.
Yeah, I was just curious. Thanks.
Yes, thank you. Maybe, Ryan, this is something we can get on the website as well. People can watch these videos and learn a little bit more. Thank you so much for being here.
You're welcome. Thank you.
So any council discussion regarding the permit itself? Can I get a motion? I'm waiting. Somebody, Todd?
Okay, I move that we approve the, was it partial acceptance blasting permit for Buckley Powder totaling $33,038.22.
Is your mic was on? Yes, everything feels, sounds soft to me. Except you'll, and you, you sound loud too. Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. So we are on to 8B, ordinance number 245-092025, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Ridge, Texas, adopting the budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2025, and ending September 30th, 2026, providing a cumulative clause, a severability clause, and a savings clause, declaring an effective date, and declaring proper notice of meeting.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and Council. I've asked Cindy to put this on the screen because this is the cover of, of your budget that you've worked through and ready for adoption tonight. I'll kind of go back to say that, you know, the budget calendar was approved in June. We had a series of workshops. The public hearing for this budget was completed and the final budget adoption is ready for tonight. As you're aware, the annual operating budget is just much more than a financial document. It serves as our policy guide, our operational framework, communication tool, and a detailed financial plan. It is a foundation upon which the city allocates the resources to ensure we continue providing high-quality services, making targeted investments, and supporting ongoing improvements. Our fiscal year runs October 1st through September 30th. The development of this budget has been thorough, transparent, and a collaborative process, incorporating input from y'all as city council, city departments. It reflects the collective priorities of the organization and our community. I'm pleased to report the proposed budget is balanced, transparent, and includes a reserve fund sufficient to cover at least 10 months of operations. This allows the city to maintain a high level of service across all departments and continue operating from a position of financial strength. I want to sincerely thank our department directors for your, for their leadership, insight, and contributions during this project. I would like to extend a special thank you to our finance and HR Director, Robin Achu. Make sure I get that right. Whose expertise and dedication were instrumental in preparing this budget. Thank you to Cindy for your creative ideas on this budget design document. I, I know that this is not something that the city has seen before as far as a budget document, but it's the one that we've all worked on and it's ready for your approval. Lastly, I want to acknowledge all of our city employees' commitment to excellence and service to the residents of Garden Ridge is the heartbeat of this organization. With the support of the City Council and the professionalism of our staff, I'm confident that this budget positions Garden Ridge for continued excellence and long-term success. Thank you, City Council, for your time, your input, your leadership throughout this process. The FY26 proposed budget is ready for adop, adoption. Attached there with the budget, you have it there in front of you. This is actually a fact sheet we can put on the website. It's a summary of highlights from both the general fund and the water fund, breakdown of the departments, our debt, our tax rate. It's kind of a snapshot of the budget there you have in front of you. So these five pages represent those 100 pages in front of you as an overview and snapshot. So I've attached this fact sheet, which highlights the budget moving forward. So I, at this point, I will open to any questions. If not, the budget's ready for adoption.
Any questions, Council?
This is really, this is really nice. Thank you.
It is. That fact sheet is great. And I think it will be perfect on the website for people who are just looking at, at quick hits of information. But big thank you to, to all of the staff and you and Robin in particular on putting this budget together. This whole proposed budget presentation has, it's just full of information. And I think we've all learned a lot about our budget this year. And it's just been, it's just been terrific. So thank you so much for that. Any questions? Any discussion? Nope, okay. So we do need to do a roll call vote on this. So can I get a motion to approve this ordinance?
I move to approve the budget for the FY 2026. I, I move to approve the ordinance number 245-09205, adopting the FY 2026 budget.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? No? Okay, we have to do a roll call vote. So Council Place 1?
Aye.
Council Place 2?
Aye.
Council Place 3?
Aye.
Council Place 4?
Aye.
The ayes have it and the motion carries. Thank you. Thank y'all. All right, we'll hop on over to 8C, which is the 2025 tax rate. We don't have a presentation for this, as you mentioned before. So we've gone over this in different meetings.
The last meeting, but essentially I've gone through the tax rate implications. And then the tax rate hearing is on the set tax rate, which is described there on the agenda.
Thank you. All right, so we need to hold a public hearing. Let's open the public hearing at 7:01. Anybody wish to come speak about the bud, or about the tax rate? Hi, John, if you'll state your name and address.
I'm John Andrews, 9403 Glaukssinia. What's being proposed here is the tax rate, hang on just a second, the voter-approved tax rate. And there is also the no new referral tax rate that, that would have also been acceptable or would have been possible legally. This tax rate is a 3.4% decrease in the, in the tax rate for this, for the city. And that's great. But at the same time, I'm looking ahead to next year and, you know, of unexpected expenses. I mean, this year we had the, the addition of a, of a police officer and that was great. You know, maybe next year we'll probably need another one, you know, despite the fact that Garden Ridge residents are known for their good behavior. The, I guess kind of my point, and, and, and there'll be other expenses that come up unexpectedly. And the cost of doing any of it is going to be higher than what we anticipate. In the meantime, here's the Texas Legislature, which is coming up with a proposal that if we have a 1% increase in taxes, then we get to have a, a voter, you have to have voter approval. You have to have an election. Okay? I guess what I'm saying is that the, to me, the, going with the no new revenue tax rate would have been a little bit safer. And I, I think at this point, it's, that's probably too late. Okay, but that's my suggestion on it. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Where's the sign-in sheet, Marissa? John, there's a sign-in sheet at the corner of the table over here. If you would just put your information down, please. City Secretary, do we have any written comments submitted? No, we do not. Okay. No other comments. We'll close the public hearing at 7:03. Okay, so we need to discuss and take action on ordinance number 246-092025, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Ridge, Texas, adopting a tax rate of 0.246430 per $100, consisting of the maintenance and operation rate and debt service rate of assessed valuation for the city of Garden Ridge to be effective for the 2025 tax year, fiscal year 2026. Council discussion? Any discussion? Okay, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve ordinance number 246-092025, adopting the tax rate of .246430 per $100 of assessed valuation for the 2025 tax year, FY 2026.
Great. Can I get a second?
I second.
Second.
So I think that was Kelly or Kendra. I don't know who got there first. Somebody got it, so that's good. Any further discussion? All right, this one is also a roll call vote. Council Place 1?
Aye.
Council Place 2?
Aye.
Council Place 3?
Aye.
Council Place 4?
Aye.
The ayes have it and the motion carries. So we are on to D, ratifies the property tax rate increase reflected in the fiscal year 2026 budget for the city of Garden Ridge. City Manager?
Mayor and Council, this is a ratify of the increase. And we had a discussion between Robin and I and we reached out to our auditors and other peers in the financial arena. And even though we have a tax decrease, we are still taking on more for the M and O. So we still have to ratify this, just the procedure. Correct, Robin?
Okay, sounds good. Any council discussion?
Robin, sorry, did you have anything? Okay.
No, good. So any council discussion? Can I get a motion? Can read that last sentence right there.
Motion to approve to ratify the property tax revenue increase reflected in the fiscal year 2026 budget.
Awesome. Can I get a second?
Second.
That was Todd. Any further discussion? Nope. All right, we take it to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 None opposed. Motion carries. We are skipping E, interview panel recommendation for appointment to Water Commission. That is still an ongoing process. We will jump to F, discussion on possible amendments to ordinance number 168 related to the use of golf carts. Hand this over to Ryan again.
Mayor and Council, past month, we had this discussion. Chief provided a presentation. Chief has done some more research from some other cities. He's prepared the packet in front of you with the proposed ordinance for golf carts. There's an example, one, and then two. So the chief, chief is going to go through those, again, giving you the outline to, you know, move forward or not move forward. There are regulations, there are enforcements. And so Chief will go through those again about what is the regulations and then what would be the potential enforcements moving forward if we were to enact the golf carts.
Thank you, Chief. Ready when, when you are.
Good evening again. Okay, so I threw a bunch of papers at you. A lot of that is the stuff that we discussed last month. So just to highlight that, you've got two examples there of the information that we can utilize to get the education out governing the use of golf carts, UTVs and OHVs in the city. They're basically contain the same information. I've just, they, they came from- I've just, they, they came from two different cities, the format did, and we just adopted it with our information. And just to highlight that, it just goes through again the do's and don'ts. You must be a licensed driver. You must have vehicle insurance, specific insurance for a golf cart. So what we've done is I've gone through, Texas DPS provides a pamphlet workbook for law enforcement regarding golf carts and, and OHVs. I've gone through that, that pamphlet that they put out and, and compiled a list of the common issues that they see and, and where it falls. So what we're dealing with, the reason it's a little complicated is you start talking about different sections of the transportation code. So you've got transportation code that's been in place for years for certain items, such as the slow, slow-moving emblem placards. So that falls under one section of the transportation code. When you talk about the driver license, that's also a separate section of the transportation code. Then they have a specific section for golf carts and OHVs that talk about the required equipment that's necessary, the, for seat belts, when they can be operated, what roads they can be operated on. So we've taken and compiled all of that data from all these multiple codes to give you that information in that sample. So we've done a lot of behind the scenes work on this to come up with this list because it's something that we'll have to go through court and be put into the computer systems based on, on all that sort of thing. So in a nutshell, you have to be licensed. So shouldn't be anybody that's not with a valid driver's license operating a golf cart according to the ordinance should you adopt it. Must have the specific insurance, must have a registration issued by the county. They will do it at the tax office. It, it looks like a license plate, it'll go on there. It doesn't have the same information that a vehicle, that, that a motor vehicle that you operate now does. It's issued to a person, not necessarily the vehicle. We have access to that information, but it's limited. So you have to have that, that license plate has to be on there. The slow-moving emblem placard has to be on there. You have to have lights, headlights, taillights, or at least a taillight. You, you have to have, if, if the vehicle comes from the manufacturer with seat belts, they must be there and they must be utilized. Not all of them have it, so it, it's going to depend on the vehicle and, and what the transportation code says. So it does get a little confusing on that. It also talks about where you can operate. So I know there's some, there's some talk about, somebody said something about 3009 and 2252. You cannot operate them on those roads, period. Those are state highways, they cannot be operated on state highways. And what adds to that complication for us is, such as Trophy Oaks, their exit comes out onto 3009. The law allows you to cross a highway with a speed limit above 35 only at certain intersections. So the issue we have is there is no intersection for anybody from Trophy Oaks to get out and get across 3009 without operating on the highway. So they're landlocked. And we talked about that with Regency Oaks, they're landlocked. So there's, there's several, Arrowood is landlocked. They cannot go anywhere by state law. So it is going to be confusing because some people are going to see golf carts driving around and think they can do it. And they're going to need to be educated on this stuff. So, so we've put that together, there's two examples of formats here. I also took a couple of cities, New Braunfels was the closest to what we were looking for, I believe. So I utilized their format, being as how they're a home rule city, and drafted up a sample ordinance containing the information that we would need. None of this has been sent through legal yet to get all the, the last hoops and hurrahs on that. But it should be in a format that is more compatible with what we need for, for our home rule charter. That can be reviewed and adopted. While we're talking about that and ordinances, I do want to throw a little bit, you know, Marissa just talked about being codified, and, and we're in the home stretch. Every time we send something to them, they have to start over. So if you're considering this, my personal opinion, I haven't talked about, anybody about this, my personal opinion is hold off on this a few months. Finish the codification process with what they already have instead of throwing something else in the wrench and slowing down our process of being codified with our ordinances. So I will make that suggestion, to maybe put that. But this will give us time to do the research. Y'all can look at that information. Please feel free to get back with me on anything that is not, that you don't understand or have a question on. I have a considerable amount of data for all that, and I've just compiled the basics in here. And we can go through that and get everything fine tuned before I get it over to the city attorneys. We're no, we're in no rush to do this. So I, I'd hate to mess up something that's already been in the works for a couple of years here with getting our ordinances taken care of.
Thank you, chief. Any counsel discussion? I think we should address some of the things that people mentioned, concerns.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was going to bring up. I know, chief, I know the last time you talked about Bat Cave and Shoenthall. Can you remind us again what the rules are on those roads?
Okay, Bat Cave is allowed by law. Both, if we pass the ordinance, our section of Bat Cave will be covered under the ordinance. But then we have the stretch of Bat Cave that belongs to the county. According to the sheriff's department, they do allow it. So that part of Bat Cave that does not belong to us would still be accessible to our residents with golf carts. And Shoenthall, since it's not a state highway, it's one of our city maintained roads, that is also allowable by your ordinance. Now you, you can restrict, this is a sample. You can add any restrictions above and beyond this. Certain restrictions we cannot remove based on the transportation code and what the state law requires. So if you want to restrict movement on additional roads, you have that authority to do so.
So we could restrict movement on Bat Cave and Shoenthall, or they?
You could restrict movement on our portion of Bat Cave.
Our portion of Bat Cave, and then on Shoenthall. Yeah. Any other comments? I mean, I think there's a lot of education involved here because...
There's going to be a whole lot. It's very confusing because of the types of communities and...
Right.
We talked about before George Ranch being gated. All the gated communities now can allow golf carts under their HOA rules, except George Ranch, because George Ranch adopted the transportation code, so they can only operate them under the current transportation code.
Right.
So that's a little different for them than everybody else already. And then you start throwing in all these other variables, can't cross highways, can't do this, can't...
Well, I mean, again, I would think some of this is common sense for people. I mean, the education needs to happen.
It's not that common anymore.
Not that common anymore, I hate to hear that. And it needs to be emphasized that you cannot drive a golf cart without a driver's license. I think I saw the same golf cart that, that Sharon Stripling mentioned today over in Forest Waters. Somebody's driving in Forest Waters with a couple of kids in the back. And I, yeah, it was a little shocking to me too, knowing what the law is, but they may not know the law.
And as far as I know, no one called us.
Right. So, you know, certainly there are safety concerns. Education is super important. What else?
There, there are safety issues, and they brought up good points on Bat Cave, since it's a double yellow line. If you do get from Park Lane Park all the way down to 2252, get behind the golf cart, you're stuck.
Yeah.
Or you violate the law by passing in a no passing zone, which some people may not understand. Well, it was only a golf cart that I passed, but it's still going to be considered, since it's covered by transportation code, it's still a violation to pass in a no passing zone.
Right, right. How about on this side? Do y'all have any thoughts on golf carts?
I, I like golf carts, but again, I am very cautiously optimistic when it comes to the rollout and the safety of knowledge for the residents and how, how we go about making sure that all the residents, or the maximum amount of residents, get the information in a timely manner as to reduce injury or higher risk.
I agree. And, and I did discuss that briefly with the city manager earlier today, and, and it's like, well, you know, we could possibly start putting some out on social media. However, it's a double edged sword. We don't want to start putting information out too early and people thinking there's already an ordinance in place and doing it. So the, the timing of this has also got to be, be a choreographed so that we don't get ahead of ourselves. So it, it's, it's a little difficult because you're really not going to be able to put a lot of that information out to educate the public till you decide whether or not you're going to pass the ordinance and get it passed. Otherwise, once people start seeing that information, they're going to assume that there's an ordinance and they're allowed to do so, and, and they're going to start driving the golf carts before the ordinance even gets adopted, if you decide to do that.
Okay. Ryan, you have any other inputs?
No, I mean, it's obviously up to counsel on which direction. I mean, we can plan this accordingly as we say that we get the information out and educate, but obviously we need to get approval, yes or no, which direction we're going to go. You know, speaking to Dan, that he's worked in some other cities related to golf carts. And so there's different types of things cities have done, even to the point to where, you know, they permitted it to where you actually had to come in, get a permit, have a checklist of everything you have for your golf cart to get that permit, and you renew it on an annual basis, correct?
That is correct.
So that's just taking the extra step to regulate that if necessary.
And, and, and mayor, I think the chief is spot on. If it were me, I would hold off on this until Marissa has everything codified. Because this is a big step that Garden Ridge is doing right now. Everything being codified in one place is very important. So I think that I agree with the chief. If I were y'all, I would hold off on this, and, and that would give us time to do a little research on it, figure out what y'all wanted to do, and then get everything codified, and then you could move forward with it if you so chose.
Okay. So what do we want next steps to be? Put some research together? Put together a draft ordinance? What?
Mayor, that's what I would recommend. There, there is, I've, there is a million ways that you could do this. You have cities like Seabrook and Seabridge that are doing, one of them has like an annual permit, and then the other one has like you come in every six months. So there's a million ways that you can do this. And then you have a little town called Curia, Curro, that basically does, you basically, I, I basically sit there and say, my golf cart has everything on it, and I don't have to come see the police. Well, these other cities, I would have to come see the police and get the permit, and the chief and his officers would check me over. So there's a million ways that you can do this. And, and it would be in my opinion that you would need to have the chief of police, you'd have to have a police department involved. That, in my opinion, is the best way to do it, to get the permit, to drive on the street. But again, there's a million ways that you can do it.
Todd, you had something to say? I'm sorry, Todd had his mic lit up for a minute there.
The codification needs to get done first. I'll just lay that out straight up. We've been working on that for way too long, so we need to get that taken care of. So this is going to push this back a couple, three, four months, whatever Marissa thinks it's going to take to finish that.
Probably longer, yeah.
How long do you think?
So codification has taken so long because we have never stopped amending ordinances throughout the process. And we've amended so many that it has impacted what they're doing behind the scenes to try to get us to the point where they even have a draft to give to us. And every time they come back to me saying, we, we just want to check and make sure there were no ordinances amended. We have this disposition list and organizational analysis prepared. There's been a few times where I send them 10 to 15 new ordinances. And so that has been the holdup. And that's what I've been saying, is that we really should only be amending or passing ordinances that we have to. The budget, the tax rate, all of those that are required by law. But if it's something that can wait a few months until after we're codified, it's much easier to amend after we're, we get the initial codification done.
Okay, so that's kind of where I'm, I'm at on that one. I fundamentally don't have a problem with golf carts. I think we can address the noise. In some ways, they're quieter than cars, so there is an advantage to neighborhoods to have an electric golf cart running around, as well as pollution. So there's some advantages there.
And, and noise, we already have noise ordinances in place.
Yeah, if they're got a stereo cranked up on the back of it, that can be dealt with. That's already something they're not supposed to be doing, so I think that addresses maybe some of the concerns. And I know people have concerns. The, the Bat Cave part of it, I think we do need to do some research on that. Unfortunately, we can't do all of it because not all of it belongs to the city of Garden Ridge. But being somebody who lives on Bat Cave, I can tell you, there's traffic that goes down that road that the speed limit might be 35 miles an hour, and they ain't doing anywhere close to 35 miles an hour. And, and that's why the county sheriff shows up out there every once in a while to have a discussion with the people that seem to think Bat Cave's speed limit should be 55 or 65 miles an hour. Which you mix golf carts into that, you're asking for, we're going to smear somebody down the road and they're going to be dead. And, and we don't want that. So I guess what I'm proposing is, is we need to do the research, but we can kind of take our time at it to get that codification done. And I know there's people that really want those golf carts and they wanted them a year ago. You know, we're a lot further along than we were two months ago in looking at this. But if we keep changing ordinances, we're never going to get everything lined up the way it needs to get. Because we've been, how long have we been working on that, Marissa? How many years? Yeah, I'm thinking back to, I, I think Larry Thompson was the mayor when we started doing it. So that'll just give you an idea how long it's been. So I, I think we need to push that through, and then let's add this ordinance in for golf carts, and we can have a good discussion with it. Come up with a plan on how we want to do it, and go forward from there.
Kelly, I saw you had your mic on as well.
No, I just, I mean, everybody, everybody has great points. I, I just, you know, obviously we all agree, safety has to be paramount. I mean, it has to be, that's got to be the number one priority. And, you know, I, I think, I think we can, I think we can make it happen. And if we do, you know, we, we got to make sure the rollout plan is very well organized, well thought out. And so, and mainly so we don't overtax the staff. So, and overwhelm them, because they, they would have a, a huge influx, right, for...
Oh, I'm pretty sure it would be, at first, yes.
So we'd have to be really...
And I'll, I'll have to do some research on, on permitting processes. Should y'all choose to do that, I'll have that information available on how to go about the city permitting. In addition to, it's already required by state to have the license plate. So, but you can definitely put a city permit on there as well.
And thank you, chief, for putting all this together.
Yeah, thanks, chief. I would, also on that permit process that you're talking about, I'd be curious if that's something, talking to the city staff, if that's something we want to do. I think it puts an extra level of control, but there's an admin work and costs that's going to have to be done by somebody.
There will be some backside costs.
So there's certainly things to think about while we put the brakes on just a little bit and let some things catch up. And I don't, the other question I had, can we work with the county? If we want to restrict stuff on Bat Cave, can we work with them to try to get them to be on board with whatever we're doing?
I imagine we could ask. That, to me, would be something that would have to be drafted and go through commissioner's court. I would, I would assume it would have to, because it would have to be a county ordinance.
I would assume that also, but if we have time to work it, we probably can make it all align and have one rule for Bat Cave, right?
We can try that, we can try that, yes. I mean, I can ask them. Like I said, at this point, when I asked them, they said they allow it on, on whatever the transportation code allows for roads. So if we're going to ask for that, then we would be the odd duck out, having that one little piece of road in their county, being the only road in their county that they had under a county ordinance. Worst they can do is say no.
Exactly what I was thinking.
Right, so you have all good points. So I guess the suggestion is that we keep gathering information, give it a couple of months, time to get the, our ordinances codified, time to put together a rollout plan, and a, you know, a draft ordinance, so we could all look at that and then see if we want to move forward. Does that sound about right? Yep, okay.
So before you do that, to clarify what you said, Councilman Mueller, when you say get the county to do the same thing, what is it you're wanting to do on Bat Cave? So that when I go to them and, and talk to this, is it, you're wanting to allow it? Or you're wanting to restrict it on that section?
I think it's already allowed, right? So the, the real question is, would they, if we wanted to restrict it, would they be willing to work with us on that?
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we were on the same page before I contact.
Yes, sir.
Thanks so much, chief, we appreciate it.
While we're talking Bat Cave, this is what my proposal to that would be, is, is people can cross it, but they can't drive down it. And you got to cross it at a known intersection. So, you know, anywhere there's a stop sign, okay, you can cross. If there's not a stop sign, I don't think it's a great idea. So chief, which neighborhoods would that affect?
That'd affect the woods.
The woods would be able to come out on Benzile and cross Benzile into Forest Waters. You just threw this at me at the last second, but I'm, I'm thinking, so it, it would affect, it would affect Park Lane area. They wouldn't be able to go anywhere. So that, off the top of my head, that would be, well, Creekside, that, that little bit... So that, off the top of my head, that would be, well, Creekside, that little bitty one down on Bat Cave that's down by the bank, then they would, they would end up being landlocked. Those, what is it, twelve, thirteen houses right there? They wouldn't be able to go anywhere if that restriction was put in place. But Wildwind, one section could get to the other, they can cross at Blazing Star, you've got Benzile for the woods and that area. George Ranch has already got across Cholenthal at- So I can't think of anybody else that that would affect, off the top of my head, only the ones that are north of the woods. It's a small number, yes.
Okay. Yeah, good comment. All right. Thank you. We'll keep working at it. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Okay, we're at eight G, agenda format structure. City manager?
Mayor and council, obviously with Brian being out, my goal was to provide a presentation and have every council member here for input. My ultimate goal, as I mentioned before, is sort of modifying and tweaking the agenda, looking at how we can be more efficient, maybe looking at staff reports, because they're already in the packet from that standpoint. What I'll be doing is looking at some of our peer cities in the area to see some of the language related to not only citizens be heard, and making sure that it's streamlined a little bit better than it currently is. But without Brian here, I would just wait till next month. I'll provide a presentation, have the full council, so I get input, because I would like to get one hundred percent of support from the council, and modification of any part of the agenda moving forward, so we can roll that out in future council meetings.
That works? That works for everybody? We'll delay until Brian's feeling better? Thank you. Then we are on to H, third-party monitoring related to ordinance number thirty-four. Ryan's got this as well.
Mayor and council, I provided at the dais there in front of you, it's a memo addressing our third-party monitoring service. And so what I have done is outlined the purpose of it in the background, and the recommended action for tonight. And we've put it under, again, being, I almost said chapter, we're not codified, sorry, ordinance number thirty-four, in regard to the blasting section as it relates to Section Seven there, the requirements. And so what the recommendation is, in conjunction with our consultant Jill Shackelford, who's been working on this with us and speaking to residents, in regards to changing monitoring services, I've outlined, obviously, as I indicated, the purpose and background. So for tonight, the recommended action would be providing Vibrotech, the current monitoring service, with a notice to end the agreement, a written notice of contract termination thirty days, authorizing myself as city manager to negotiate into a new service agreement with IGS, and then working to collaborate with Jill to finalize the scope and cost of services with IGS, ensuring full compliance under ordinance thirty-four, focusing on transparency, also working with Heidelberg on the transition of the monitoring services. As I've outlined in my memo, I have been in communication with LB, who confirmed he has no objection to the change in service provider or cost adjustment, because there is an elevated cost in changing monitoring services. Right now, there's only currently six sensors were invoiced at, I think, thirty-one hundred a month. This changes to six to nine sensors for blasting, and then an additional sensor for dust and noise that wasn't currently being done, which brings the cost to, I think, about forty-eight, seventy-five. Again, speaking to LB and speaking for Heidelberg, that they are comfortable with this and have no objection with changing services, and then that increased cost, because they do reimburse us for the monitoring services. Questions, mayor and council?
Mayor and council.
I have a representative from IGS, Joe Crownover. He can speak through. You have the attachment there, which has the proposal, and in detail, provides an outline of costs related to the sensors that they would be working with, with his company, to do the monitoring as a third party now, moving forward.
Just a little background. We did meet with LB, with Heidelberg. Was it early August? Was it early August, I think?
Yes.
Yeah. And we brought this up, that there has been a little dissatisfaction with Vibrotech, and maybe it was a good idea to have a fresh start with another company. Jill Shackelford, our quarry consultant, highly recommended, Joe Crownover with IGS. Joe was actually around when the blasting ordinance was written, so he's been around. He also serves all of, I think he said, all of the other Heidelberg operations in Texas. Yeah, if you wanna come up and give us a little background, that'd be awesome.
Good evening, everyone. Yeah, I was here at the very beginning of the quarry commission, two thousand and four, I believe, so it's a little nostalgic coming in. Of course, back then, it was at the old council. So yes, I'm very familiar with the Heidelberg operations. We provide monitoring at their Burnett operation, Lake Bridgeport and Bridgeport quarries. So work well with LB and other management there, very familiar with the dynamics of working for the city, and still having a working relationship with the quarry as well. So. Any questions for me?
And as Ryan mentioned, the change here is also that we are adding air monitoring and noise monitoring. That has been in ordinance thirty-four since it was written.
Correct.
Todd and I, when, in the same meeting with LB, we couldn't exactly figure out when that kind of monitoring was discontinued. I know it-
A while ago.
A while ago. I mean, probably ten plus years? Maybe more? Maybe, I think, we don't have records on when that was discontinued with Vibrotech, but I think those two are an important addition to getting the full picture of what's going on, and they represent concerns of our citizens. So I think adding those two services is really important.
I like the air quality.
Yeah, the air quality is certainly a concern. I know we hear a lot about dust.
And there will be a single station where one station measures both noise and dust. So.
Any more questions? I think this is a good transition, a good, a very good idea. So if there's no further council discussion, thank you, Joe. Can I get a motion?
I'll take a stab at it. I move that we approve the change in the monitoring services for the quarry.
Do we need to include the thirty-day notice with Vibrotech?
I would assume so. Dan, I think we need two motions, one for providing the written notice as outlined in their current contract, the thirty-day notice, and then authorizing myself to-
To negotiate.
To negotiate and work with.
Okay.
Which one do we wanna do first? You wanna do the termination first, so that we can get the letter out, the thirty-day notice out, then do the second, needs to be for Ryan to be in action to go and negotiate with.
Okay. I move that we approve the, giving Vibrotech a thirty-day notice of termination.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any council discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 None opposed, the motion carries. So we need a second motion to authorize the city manager to negotiate and enter into a new service agreement with IGS.
I move to have the city manager negotiate with IGS.
And enter into do?
And enter into an agreement for a new monitoring service.
Yeah, I think that works. Can we get a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 None opposed, the ayes have it, and the motion carries. Thank you. So we are on to nine, city council projects. One is aggregate production operations impacting Garden Ridge. We just kinda covered that, so we will move on to mitigation of growth and encroachment impacts on Garden Ridge. The one thing that we talked about before was the gas station down on Cholenthal and three double oh nine. Do you have any updates on that, Ryan?
No, mayor, other than they're moving dirt, they're inside the county, so they've gotten all the requirements from the county for building permits and everything they need. We're working with them to look at extending a water line to them. And so that's something that Stephen and Hank and I are working with them, to extend the water line, determine a rate to supply them water, basically.
Awesome. Thanks for the update.
And so, once it's developed, we can discuss the possibility of being included in Garden Ridge.
I love to hear that. Okay, update number three, that's economic development. I'm gonna let Kelly handle that, I've been talking too much.
Yeah, so we've got a lot of good things working right now. We've had some meetings with some local landowners, who've had some important meetings, and Lisa is, unfortunately, I don't get to go, but Lisa gets to go to Retail Live tomorrow. So that's where we get to make a bunch of great contacts, it's a networking thing, right? You're out there building relationships and, you know, looking at, you know, and talking to, you know, targeting the types of businesses and retail that you want here in the city. So I'm jealous that I can't go. You have fun tomorrow. That's it for me right now, I think.
Yeah, I think that about covers it. We had a great meeting with local property owners. We do have some things, you know, really cooking, so that's exciting. So on to four, outreach and communication efforts between residents and city council. Brian is not here, so we can skip that. On to ten, discussion of future agenda items. Anybody need something on a future agenda? All right, then we're hopping to number eleven, citizen comment period. So it's limited to twenty minutes total, not required to sign in, sign up, but you must sign in with the city secretary after speaking. It's a two-minute period, the same rules apply. We are unable to respond. When you come up, state your name and address before you begin your comments. Anybody wanna come up for the second comment period? Come on. Name and address, please.
Vanessa J. Douglas, ninety forty-five Sumat Cove. And I just wanted to thank the waterworks team, because recently I sprung a leak, and they're not in the business of saving you money, but his guys knocked on my door, told me something was leaking, and saved me a bunch of money and helped me turn it off. So wanted to say thanks to the water commission. I know they always get a lot about, you know, water restrictions and what's going on, but they saved me, so thank you. That's it.
Thank you for that. Vanessa, this one you have to sign with Marissa. We've got a public meeting, one, yeah, public hearing and regular. So we are on to twelve, reports and comments from mayor and city council members. Anybody have anything to report on the various activities boards that are on this list?
I have some chamber updates. So out in our audience, we have a guest, so Kevin Lindquist with Tri-County Chamber of Commerce, which we are a city partner with. They start a military affairs committee, so if you don't mind standing up, I'll introduce you real quick. So that's Kevin with Tri-County Chamber of Commerce. So he has taken upon himself to like run, grab the bull by the horns, and start the military affairs committee for Tri-County Chamber, which is awesome. So, but he had a bunch of great ideas we were talking about in the hallway earlier, so I can't, I can't wait to hear what else he's got in line for us. So, and then September ninth luncheon, so eleven to one, and that is at Northeast Lakeview College. Luncheon Learn Chat GPT Training, September seventeenth. Those have been very interesting. I missed the first one, but I've heard a lot of great things come from that, from people of all ages and all technological backgrounds, so it seems to be pretty interesting. So any of you business owners out there wanna attend it, go to txtri-countychamber.org. And, great news, so Tri-County Chambers, they've had a, for, I mean, clear back from when I was chair in two thousand and fourteen and fifteen, they've actually, it's been a virtual, they've had a virtual office. And so there's actually, we actually have an office now, a physical location on Pat Booker Road in Universal City, so it's also serving as a visitor center and marketing hub for our members, so. And that's it.
Thanks. Kelly, anybody else? I wanted to give a shout out to the Garden Ridge Women's Club. When you're walking into the council chambers, if you look up and you see that new sign with our logo and our slogan, Naturally Home, they gave a nice donation towards purchasing that sign, so we really appreciate that. So if we've got nothing else, we're adjourned. There being no further business, the city council regular meeting is adjourned at seven forty-four PM. Thank you.